That's a positive sign. I guess I'll be here in a couple of seconds. Okay, we are at 6:30. So we will call the study session for the DPS evaluation report to order at 6:30 PM. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance wherever you're at. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Had some interesting background on that, but all right. Carrie, if you could go for a roll call, please.
Sir, councilpersons Duprey, here.
Here.
Kelsey.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Talcido.
Yes, here.
Tobin.
Here.
And Mayor Kars.
Here. Okay. The purpose of the study session today is to discuss the DPS evaluation report that had been, I think it's been done for a couple of months now, but we'll turn it over to our city manager, James Kazan, to start things off, and we can go from there. So, James?
Okay, yes, thank you, Mayor. So, yeah, over the summer, we contracted with GovHR USA to help us out to do an organizational assessment and evaluation of our Department of Public Services. We've done historically different studies like this through our public safety divisions as well. And so it's just a good idea to have a fresh set of eyes, take a look at our processes, policies, staffing levels, all of that. So with us tonight, we do have Sarah McKee, who was the contractor who provided the service. So I'm going to actually turn it over to her and let her go through kind of the highlights of the report.
Okay, welcome, Sarah.
Thank you, James. Good evening, Mayor and councilwomen. It's so good to be here with you to kind of walk through this process. So just a little background on me, so you're aware, I'm a former solid waste superintendent, a former fleet superintendent, a former public works director, and a former city manager. So that's my background. So still try to stay very current on things going on in public works and do a lot of recruitment in that area as well. So, yeah, and anytime during this conversation, feel free to interrupt me if you have a question or we can wait to the end, however you would like to do it. You know, when James called and we talked through the process of what he was looking for and what we could provide was to look at, you know, some of the aspects of the department was to determine operating efficiencies to optimize effectiveness of the management and delivery of services always to the Lincoln Park community. And then also to look at supervisor employee ratios and how the structure of the public services department was put together. And so we threw a series of me examining several documents that James sent over prior to my arrival there, things like budgets and if we had any SOPs or standard operating procedures or budgets, union agreements, those types of things. And so, you know, the goal is to enhance better services through increased efficiencies. And obviously, that results again to better service to the community of Lincoln Park. And so through that process, gaining an understanding of, you know, what we look at or what we call the three Es, which is effectiveness, meaning getting the right things done, efficiency, accomplishing them in the right ways, and the economy, limiting the use of scarce resources, which we all know is very scarce these days in both in personnel. So we went through a process of, I went there for a couple of days, watched the operation, had several tours of the area, enlistations, and so on and so forth out the community. And so got a good picture of, you know, watching the operations during the day, how it started in the morning, how things ended in the afternoon, and just a good, and then was able to speak with, I believe, all but one or two of the, or maybe, maybe it was more than that, maybe more than half, I would say, of the employees that were there in those two days. And so was able to talk to them about, you know, thoughts that they had about the operations. A lot of times, people in the field have a better grasp on more efficiencies, more efficient way to do things. One thing I found with worst people is they can always find the most efficient way to do it if they want to. And so looked through a lot of the processes they had within the building. We talked about those in the report. So based upon that, our recommendations were the following. And so one of the areas we talked about is contracting for greater efficiencies. Most workers don't want to hear that, but there are things that can be contracted out that really are from a safety and security standpoint for the employees as well as the community, things like repairs that take place in the roadway, which are very concerning sometimes because they do have, you know, pedestrian movements, traffic movements, and if they're working in a small area, that could be dangerous to everyone involved in the process. So anything related to that, which includes tree trimming, which is another area where we see a lot of injuries. And so the other things such as fleet services and preventative maintenance, I know that the city's had an issue trying to find qualified mechanics, which isn't just Lincoln Park's issue, it's all our nation. We see it everywhere that we go. So, you know, to look at ways that you can contract out so that the employees that are there can concentrate on things that are strategic to the community. And so if the community is, as a council, if you lined out certain strategic areas that you want them to concentrate in and hopefully contracting out some of these services, then they could concentrate on those other areas. The other thing we recommend is technology. I mean, it's such a way to improve efficiencies within the department. I know at the time, they were working on a work order system implementation, which is a dumbass, don't get me wrong, I've been through it a couple of times, but it does, it helps on both sides. It helps not only the people that are using it to understand what the work that they're doing and how it affects, but how the work is being done, and so that people can see that, yes, we have done that. If somebody, you know, a citizen calls in and says, you know, they have it, but we've got a work order system in place that follows that, a great budgeting tool from a standpoint of how many tons of gravel we used, or how many, you know, we used in pothole repairs, or whatever the case may be, it's a great way to track that along with man, are we devoting too many man hours to a certain area, and what can we do to improve upon that area? And so one of the things through technology that we can, we can track those things instead of just having a big spreadsheet somewhere. So also, you know, the way, the thing we talk about for almost everywhere we go is about succession planning and being able to do that at all levels of management. We see this kind of nationwide of where there's a position that's open at a senior level, say a department head, and there's just that second person in command. And having two new supervisors in that department, it became clear that there could be some additional trainings for them. And so I think part of that is passing on some of that knowledge that's there for the supervisors to be able to get and be able to use in the field. The other thing we recommend is creating a program to be ongoing and done on a regular basis. It appeared that a lot of the employees were behind on some of their classes and/or refresher classes are certainly the best thing to do. Pieces of equipment change, processes change, and so it's important that the employees stay aware of those things, stay aware of things, you know, even with COVID, I mean, that was obviously, you were getting updates to them, and that's a very important process of COVID is understand how things changed and what the requirements were and how things would be operational. And sometimes, obviously, during that process, it may have changed from day to day or week to week, but those things can also be applied to other areas that are important in the public works arena to be able to keep the employees safe and to have them properly trained and to be able to be aware of those things that they should be watching for out in the field or in the shop. So through that, developing standard operating procedures, which we didn't really find many of, those things can be very simple or they can be very detailed. It depends on what the procedure is that you're trying to develop into a standard. And so it's important to have those, you know, when people are sometimes called in in the middle of the night, perhaps are kind of new on the job, or it's something they haven't seen before, if they've got a procedure in place, it's easy for them to refer back to them. So the other thing we noticed was there's a lack of implementation of some of the performance to take state regulations regarding current or existing in the department such as lead pipes, CSLs are combined sewer overflows, and those need to be addressed, and there needs to be a plan put in place as to how they're going to be addressed in the future. And I know a lot of that is cost dependent, I know that, but at least having a plan in place for when funds are available would be a great start in order to start addressing some of those issues. The other thing we recommended was to examine the possibility of going to monthly billing. Two things there, you know, on a quarterly billing from a citizen's standpoint, if they're having difficulties paying it, it may be easier for them to pay month by month instead of quarterly. It does increase the costs on mailings and, you know, stamps and that thing, but that might be offset by the number of times the men are going out into the field. You know, first they have to go put a hanger up, and then if they pay, they have to go back and take the hanger off, and that's done a couple of times prior to, and then obviously once when they remove it. But that's a lot of man hours being taken up on a quarterly basis. And that's not to say you won't still have shut offs, but it may be worth looking from a standpoint of budgetary, which would be the better option. And then the last thing we talked about was an increase in communication at all levels of the organization. And one of the biggest things I heard from almost all the employees is just our communication. And sometimes, you know, that being said is, you know, if the answer to their question is no, that's okay, as long as they have the ability to understand that they've been communicated with, they've been understood, they've been heard, and then also that information, you know, we see this a lot when you have a city hall in one place and you have a public works in one place, or even a police department in another place, fire stations, is they always feel that disconnect. And so being able to provide, you know, to lessen that gap of how they feel that disconnected really makes a big difference to them. They feel like they're a part of the organization, they're a part of the team, they understand what's going on, whether it involves them or not. And the other thing we also remind is, a lot of times, the people at public works are some of the only people that maybe residents refer to for information. And so they may be the ones providing information on something that's going on in the neighborhood or the community, and so making sure they have that information, I think, was very important. And so those are the main recommendations that we have, and we can take a break here, and I can ask questions, or we can continue on?
Plus, there's questions right now. Why don't you continue on, and then we can dive into it right after that?
Sounds good, Mayor. When going back and looking at the recommendations and options for those, we talked about, again, the span control in order to analysis, and it didn't find a lot, like way out of order or anything. It is kind of a small gap, and so, you know, city manager span of control could be a larger span of control because typically, the department head's under him, no one's bringing in, they can run that part of it, and so it's just a matter of strategic working with them. But when you get down from the director level down to the supervisor level, we like those fans of control smaller, which you do have, but sometimes they can get too small to where you just, it's just flat. And so looking at that from a perspective of, you do have leave workers in place, but they really don't have any supervisor to control. They have a big direct in the field, if you will, which is great, that you've worked through that process with them to have that, but some, we have to look at that, and that also goes to communication. And so be, you know, being able to, the found that four layers that it goes through, the less the information gets to the bottom. We've all been through those fun things where you whisper something, and by the time it comes around the room, it's totally changed. And so that's what we're looking at, is that the level that the instruction from the city manager to the director, to two supervisors, to then, you know, that could lose some information, and it goes the other way as well. And so just keeping a mindful note of that, and so that will help. The industry standard is about what's seen in the community of your size, and so we wouldn't make much change in that regard. What we do recommend, obviously, is that making sure those supervisors are fully trained, they're well aware of, you know, how they need to proceed with any disciplinary reasons, and so being able to distribute the work evenly is really what is key, and then monitoring that to make sure that each section of those do have some standard, if you will, standard operations under them, and so that might be moving something around within the department. But, you know, we talked about making sure that current technology is used in the best place that it can be through your work order system. Cause I found that sometimes work assignments were just given verbally, which might be good occasionally, but it's really not been on the long term for everyday assignments. Plus, if they're given verbally, there's no way to track them, there's no way to keep up with them. And so we, you know, highly recommend that at least a worker be given in some type of written form and a copy of it kept so that it can be tracked, so it can be, you know, maybe later entered into the database, so that, once again, we talked about using it for budgetary reasons, it comes in handy. It protects the workers so that they can show that they've done the work that they did and that they used certain parts of the products that were available to them to do it. And then it also may help to say, you know, we ran out of eight inch pipe today, so we need to order some more, that just keep up inventory that's being used by them doing these operations in the field. One of the things we also talked about was looking at a weekly schedule. I know in public works, it's things each day to day, but at least a schedule in place so if somebody gets done early with something, they can come back in and see, you know, on a whiteboard written that, always go out and pick some brush up, or, you know, whatever the case may be, and being able to track that again through the different areas that they're working in around town, and looking through that from a perspective of budget means and what that means from the workers in the field and how they can keep track of that. The other thing we talked about, again, through creating expertise through repetitive functions and planning, we noticed there's not much, a lot of consistency, as if somebody in the water department doesn't have order, then they'll go out and turn treat and vice versa. And it's great that employees can be cross-trained, don't get me wrong on that, but sometimes have professionals in the field, some people are better at other things, and so there's pay for other things. And it doesn't mean that they can't do something else in emergency situation, but we found that consistency is typically best for most employees, and then they truly look at tasks over and over again, and they become better at it, they become more at it, then they're able to train others that come onboard after them. And so just looking at that from a perspective of what's the interest of the employee, and to hopefully be able to, you know, work through that to see what their interest is, whether that's in the water, or streets, or super, whichever the case may be, and just being able to help them develop their professional skills, sort of, you know, a little bit of consistency. And then if they, you know, if their desire is to become a supervisor at some point, then work with them through different operations and having those in place. You know, additionally, that goes to the standard operating procedures, if those were in place and written down so the employees could be familiar with them and be able to respond to needed. And so it also helps with, you know, performance review. If they're not following standard operating procedures, then that can help in those review processes. And so it starts with being able to have a look at what the strategic plan is from the city, and start the city council going on down to the city manager to be able to look at the department to know what situation it's going to be. The other thing we talked about was the organization at the public services complex seems very disorganized. First observation was someone who would come in that morning to help some stuff, do the trailer, which you allow them to do, you know, that trailer's located far away from where the person is that checks them in. That tray was located in an area that has equipment running back and forth, it creates an area that could be susceptible to damage to individuals, to equipment, to things, to whatever else might come along with that. And so the suggestion would be, if that's going to continue to be the case, to get up closer to where the person checking in can observe that. It would keep them away from a lot of the other movements, not to say that it wouldn't be in some movement close to it, but it would certainly be away from where it is currently now. And so that's one of the observations that we had. Any cases, you know, a piece of equipment were just kind of stored about, and so, you know, we want to make sure that we have equipment that's needed in fatality of the time. Many times, years ago, when I guess money's were a little bit more available, it was often that, well, we might need this piece of equipment, and you really only use it a few times a year, or even 12 times a year. And so that's when you have to look at working out a legal agreement with somebody local, and if it's in an emergency, they understand that they may be called out in the middle of the night, but if it's a certain piece of equipment, they're not going to use regularly, it should be probably auctioned off or whatever you have of getting rid of equipment. And so there could be several of those there. Also, just looking at the area of the garage, I really don't know how to keep track of anything within that's in that garage, because there's just a lot of stuff piled up. It seems to be almost a safety hazard in there. I think there's a good parts tracking system, and so those are the things that we worry about from safety standpoint, an accountability standpoint, sure that, you know, the parts that are there are parts that are needed on the current vehicles and not parts that used on a vehicle that was auctioned off two, three years ago. And so the other thing we talked about, just smaller things like knowing where pipes are, where a certain type of rock is, where certain things are stored, and that just, that didn't seem to be the case there. It seemed to be, and admittedly, there were a couple of pieces of equipment that needed to be auctioned off, and then they just hadn't been. And so, again, we also talked about water billing and shut offs and looking at that from a perspective of, is it more economical and wise to actually use it at a monthly standpoint? Again, recommending that contract and lease services be done, what you can possibly do now if you have contractors available, that's the durability to perhaps do it late in the evenings when it's, there's not as much traffic in the high-traffic areas, or when it makes sense to just be able to rent a piece of equipment that you only need for certain applications. And so the other thing, you know, from a perspective of finding mechanics, as we talked about earlier, it's almost impossible to do, and if you do, most of them, not all of them, most of them are specialized in a certain area, whether it's passenger trucks or diesel engines or small engines. And so we see, that's probably the area that we see the most being contracted out at this point, are fleet services, like what's a fully reservice, you could just about anything from fire trucks to sedan. So it's one program that a lot of people have looked at from a standpoint, they don't have to keep up on parts. You have, you know, so these vehicles down the street are just computer on wheels almost, it seems like, because they're also made in it. Keeping up with that technology and then keeping up with the program that you need to read the technology is expensive in and of itself. And so it's certainly not a reflection on the, it's just a reflection on the cost of when a city has an aging fleet and being able to maintain it to proper standards. And we talked about communication from a standpoint of that needs to be from the top to the bottom, of being able to explain to employees what's going on, whether that's, like I mentioned, a change in health insurance, or change in policy, or, you know, uniform change, whatever that is, it's delivering that message to all the employees at the same time. And that leads to better communication from a standpoint of, I heard this, and I heard that, and this is two different people here, because somebody just told them when they were passing them in the hall or something, but it's important that, you know, things are communicated clearly. Part of that communication, again, it's through that work order system, communicating what's been done, what's not been done, and tracking, measure performance that way. The other thing we recommended is the city manager have a stronger presence at DPW, it would make them feel a part of the team, it would let him be able to understand what's happening down there as well, from his point of what's going good, what's not going good, you know, especially during in between contract negotiations, maybe something comes up that could be addressed prior to negotiations that would eliminate that process. And so being able to, you know, listen to them and have contact with them, as we talked about, information is power, and these employees are out on the streets, dealing with the residents and trying to understand their questions, and perhaps helping be them and being able to provide information to the residents. Also, again, mentioned succession planning and how important that is, you know, being able to provide even some customer service training for the pool that are working in the field, that goes away from them, be able to, you know, explain something when maybe a citizen is very irate about something that's going on. And so, you know, with technology today, and being able to do training in safety online or through webinars, or, there's a lot of companies out there that, yes, they want to sell you a product, but they're also going to be providing safety as well. Additionally, manufacturers, most of the time when you bought a piece of equipment, you know, they're happy to come back and do training on it if that's needed, if you've got employees that don't understand how certain pieces of equipment work. And, you know, obviously, is, we don't want anybody to get hurt from a piece of equipment or that piece of equipment hurts someone else or something. So making sure that a lot of training is done, and it's done through the standard operating procedures that are developed within the department. Again, we talked about conformant state regulations, being able to at least start a plan, plan and process of how the potential, or the potential cause, where there's available to generate revenues, to address the cost, and what is the plan to replace them. And it's an important thing to start immediately, as, as you know, there's going to be more regulations coming down on a lot of these environmental concerns, and so that's one thing that you can do, at least start putting something in place to get how they plan to address some of those issues. So we, in conclusion, you know, the strategic view of is the public works services function through some of how the city delivers its mission, goals, and objectives, is achieve that strategic coordination through examining the thought offered here and examining other organizational fiscal abilities, be able to, the recommendations that we provided in the step. So questions, comments?
Open up to council.
I got a question through the chair, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
Did you get into the staffing of the retention basin based upon Wayne County's mandate when they turned it over to the city about how many people must be physically stationed in the building? Did you see that document that John got from Wayne County when we, we've been talking about it for a while, where because it's a multimillion dollar building, because it's not really automated too far yet, that physical presence is required in the building because of the money and the equipment, stuff like that, and we have not had any physical presence. We have an alarm system, but basically the only thing we have that notifies somebody that alarm went off, but there's nobody actually physically stationed in that building eight hours, or four hours, or three hours. Did you ever look into that, or did you see the document that John got from Wayne County when we absorbed that? I guess through the chair, or whatever. Sir, did you guys, want to take a look at that?
I did not get that. Kelsey, I did not receive that document.
Okay, all right, well, that's, that's one of the, I'm sorry.
I'm happy to look at it to see, you know, why the report was made.
Yeah, because it's Hennessy Engineering, which is the engineering company, as you're all aware of, but we've been working on it, because quite frankly, we haven't been doing what we're supposed to do, and that is a multimillion dollar retention base, I mean, more and out, because it can't be replaced from what it was built. But yeah, I think that would be a good idea, maybe John or James can give you that document, you can talk to Hennessy about, because we've been talking about that for a while. And it's a good report, and it's similar to what a lot of corporations are doing too, and the biggest thing is morale and input from the employees, I think, sir, and I think that's, that's where the employees feel they're part of a solution and part of a problem. And the issue is, is that sometimes what happens is, we get busy in our daily lives and nobody walks into the dark corners to take a look at what's going on, but yet, they all... take a look at what's going on. But yet, they also know that it gets fixed. But when it doesn't get fixed, everybody gets a phone call. So I think sometimes your recommendation could be for everybody to take a walk through that place and talk to employees, either as a group or individually, or whatever, just to see what the, like you say, what the mood is. Because as a council, we do vote on the budget, we do vote on everything else. So, but thank you. I like your report. It's very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Most likely, Warren.
Okay, sir. Anything else from, anyone else, council?
Through the chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I find it interesting, you're talking about inventory and, is it my understanding, you don't think that they know what inventory they have, or what, where is that? Can you give me a little more brief on what you were meaning by that?
Certainly, you know, the garage is a prime example. I don't think there's any type of parts inventory happening there. There's no, you know, this part went on this car type of thing, very, very well done. Maybe perhaps they are doing a better job with the, if the work order system is up and going. But, you know, there seem to be a lot of tires there for the size organization that, and perhaps it's, it's not something typically, tires is something that usually gets contracted out, because it's such an intense labor process to, you know, if you're going to, you know, put a new tire on, or change them all throughout, or something like that. So it just appeared, I mean, if you walk into that garage, I, it was a safety nightmare to me. I mean, there was just stuff stacked everywhere. There doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason to what's where, or what, how it's stored, or anything like that. Same thing with the yard, you know, I mean, it's, typically, you would see in a yard, the equipment lined up in a certain area. You would see if you have those, if you have storage trailers out there, those in one area, and so forth. But there's just, it's kind of just a mix and mingle of things. And so from an efficiency standpoint, it needs to be able to come in, and if they need pipe, and then they need rock, those things to be in order to where they can pick them up and get in the truck and get away, especially if it's an emergency situation where you've got, you know, in the night, and there's a fire pit that's broken off, you've got water spewing everywhere, and those guys need to know exactly where parts are, where they get them. And if they're not there, it's difficult for them to solve an issue in the middle of the night.
Thank you, and thank you for the report, as well.
Through the chair, please?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
My question is, the people that we have in position right now, do they have the ability to take some of these changes that are, that are addressed, and carry them out themselves, or will they need resources to help, like office resources, or something like that?
Is that for me?
Yeah, that would...
Well, I mean, I, the way I took it, everybody seemed to have the ability to do the jobs that they're assigned to do. That wasn't a question, really. I mean, I got to go out into the field, there happened to be a water main break that day, so, or, no, they cut it. I think the gas company had knocked into it that day. And so, you know, I, it wasn't a matter that the employees are not able to do it, it's just that, for instance, like the work order system, there, there just needs to be some time given to it in order to train them on how to use it, how to operate it, how to input. You know, once, yes, it's going to be tough in the beginning, but, you know, so, I think so it was when they changed to the digital hand clock, too. And so, you know, those are just things that get, that change over time, and things they get used to. I think they have the ability to learn how to do those types of things. I certainly think they have the ability to learn new, new things in the field, if it makes work easier for them and more efficient. It's, it's not the things that need to be contracted out that they don't know how to do. It's not. It's just the things that are safer to be contracted out, and puts them free, gives them some time to do more strategic things that you want them to do. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Through the chair, if you don't mind, Ms. McKee.
Councilman, go ahead.
I have a couple of questions for Ms. McKee, and then, of course, Mr. Kreuzen. Ms. McKee, did you contact anybody from council to talk to in regards to the DPS? I know I was a liaison, and I believe Mr. Kelsey was a liaison. We perhaps could give you some insight. I don't recall getting a call. Have you contacted anyone from City Hall for your report?
Yes, I did talk to Councilman Kelsey on site.
He was the only one. Right? That's, that's my question. He was the only one you contacted, then, right?
Correct.
But I know in your report, you also mentioned Allen Park and Wyandotte. Did you check out the budgets for those cities compared to our city in regards to the DPS funding? You mentioned Allen Park and Wyandotte in your report in regards to size and...
Yeah, it's in, it's in the attachment A.
Right. So did you look at the budgets for Allen Park and Wyandotte in comparison to Lincoln Park? Were they comparable as far as money going to the DPS?
Um, Lincoln Park's at 23.7. Allen Park's at 19.7.
Try again.
23.4.
I'm talking about allocation to the DPS, not total budget in general. Money going to DPS or Wyandotte Park, is that comparable to Lincoln Park?
We did not look at that, no. We looked at budget.
Because maybe perhaps that's why there were some equipment efficiencies, perhaps. Right?
It's, it just happens hard to look at those budgets, because enterprise funds and how they direct those funds.
Okay, I have three questions for our city manager, Mr. Mayor.
Okay.
I also have questions for Ms. McKee, then I can leave.
Well, I'd prefer, since we have 20 minutes or so left on this, to get questions answered while, for other council members while Sarah is here. And then we can go on to James later on. But let's see what, what develops here.
That's fine. Thank you.
Is there any other council we should be heard?
Through the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
My question is, if we were to implement some of these things that she's suggesting from this report that we're lacking at DPS right now, is there a timeframe she could tell us it might take to get some of these things, like inventory and that done, and the work orders going out and being followed through with? Just any idea of how long that would take to get that up and running and making it work correctly?
Well, I think it's just a matter of, you know, obviously, you're getting into a season where public works gets a little busy. And so, but there are, you know, a lot of those days, you know, in between snowstorms, when it's harder to get out into the field to make repairs or whatever, those are great times to be offering training, and so these quarter systems and things like that. It's a wonderful time for them to be able to do that when they have a little bit of downtime in the winter months. And so, what could they, that could be done, you know, if you set aside, you know, four hours a week to really do an intense training with them, those are things that they could learn, whether that's the work order system, or, or other things that, or their safety classes that they need to get caught up on. And so that's a lot of things that are coming up. So, you know, it's going to take time, it'll take, you know, a few months for them to fully get a hold of how that work order system works. But more importantly, I think the two supervisors need to get trained immediately. And then that will help, obviously, with the workers that work under them and being able to assist them. And so those are things that your work order company can do, or, or maybe your IT people can do, I'm not sure. But, you know, those are things that could be immediately done, and maybe have a good time to do that in kind of the, in between snowstorms, if you will, this winter.
And that's part of your response, when you said the two supervisors needed to do, do what immediately?
Well, if they can have, you know, one of the things, they were getting training on it, but it wasn't, in my opinion, a hard, fast course on how to use it. If you want somebody to use it, they need to learn quickly, and then keep learning over time. And so once those two supervisors know how to use the system, then it's easier for them to instruct the employees under them when, you know, a person who's not, their trainer is not there for them to be able to ask questions. And then setting up a way for them to maybe have a portal that allows them to, the two supervisors to put questions to somebody who knows about what it is, you know, to try to input something, and it's not letting them, or whatever the case may be. The other thing to remember is, making sure that system is, I didn't look at that system, but making sure that system is set up to where the information that's being entered is the information that's going to provide you the most information. Because it's the old saying of garbage in is garbage out. And so if it's not, the input is not related to what needs to be related from a budgetary standpoint, or man-hours, or parts, equipment, those kinds of things, then it's really of no use for you. And so making sure that you work the company that's set it up to, it's going to produce what it needs to produce for you to fully take advantage of it.
Councilman Tobin, did you have more?
No, they probably have. Thank you.
Okay, Sarah, you mentioned... Oh, go ahead.
Thank you, Your Honor. Sarah, is it possible to implement your recommendations and not cause overtime?
I think it is. I think it is. I mean, you know, a lot of recommendations are training in safety. And so I said, if the guys are able to either come in an hour early and get an hour's worth of training one day on a safety issue, or a webinar on something, you know, that's not cause overtime at all. And I don't think, being able to work through, through the winter months, and that's a time when we always recommend that safety programs being updated and so forth, so that, you know, there's going to be days when they can't get out in the field to do work. Also, you know, one of the things I definitely know that I put in the report, that there seem to be areas that haven't been cleaned in some time in public works, you know, doing those things when you have an hour. It's amazing why you can get cleaned up in an hour when you have a couple of guys in there doing it. And so I think, you know, you're at a prime time in these winter months coming up, not just, not crazy, don't get me wrong, but there are overtimes probably going to be spent plenty. And so when they, when they're not doing that, having to have some sections planned, whether that's just an online thing that they can come in and watch, or somebody that will come in and do some training, or whatever the case may be. So I don't think it would cause overtime, especially in the months coming up. Obviously, in the summer months, you might look into that. It's just a look, isn't it, your dream?
Thank you.
Are you all set, Councilwoman?
Yes.
Okay, Sarah, you mentioned a lot of things in the, in the reports, and gone over quite a lot. Safety has been mentioned on several occasions. So when it goes to the worker's safety, what should our priority be as we're going into this, actions that you've mentioned? What should we be concentrating on first?
Well, obviously, making sure that they've been, you know, updated on any, if you have any new plow equipment, or if there's new roadways that are going to be different than before. But, you know, the younger guys, maybe this is only their second season in snowstorms, obviously, retraining them in that process. Anything you can do to help them to make, when they're out there plowing, they're safe, the residents are safe, well-maintained. And so first, you know, at this point, all the equipment should have gone, that probably been gone through, to make sure it's up and running and ready to go, and greased and oiled, and whatever else needs to take care of, to take care of, so that, you know, you know it could come a snowstorm tomorrow, and then you're there without, ready to go forward. And not just the big equipment, you've obviously got sawing machines that you use on sidewalks and parking lot areas at City Hall, or at public works. And so, you know, anything that they do right now, whether that's just going out into the large parking lot and moving those trucks back where they understand what they're doing with them and how they're doing it. So the other thing is, this would be a time for, to look at the routes, to make sure the routes are the most efficient, and they're run in the most efficient manner. I don't know if they have a, we didn't talk about it, I don't know if they have a route or system. But a lot of times, somebody flies on a different route that they're not used to running, may show a better way, or a more efficient way to run that route. It may not, it may already be the most efficient way that you can run that route. But it, it's always good to take a relook at things like that, to understand, okay, this is how the route's going to be, and they run it a couple of days, and just run the routes where they understand where the complications might be, especially if they're new to it. You know, maybe there's a certain mailbox that sticks out early, there's a manhole that's going to give them a good knock in the jaw, because they hit it with a plow or something. It's always good to know those things.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm sorry. I thought I heard, I'm going to open it up for, for public comment right now. I want to make sure that those that are here have an opportunity to have, ask questions also. So James, if you can free up the, give them the ability to unmute themselves. And if anyone would have, the assistant has a, has a comment or wants to, or has a, has a question. I know that we have employees that are for the DPS that are out there. I'd like to hear your opinion on this, if you're willing to give some, so. Okay, go lead. What's that? Go ahead, sir. I'm sorry, I thought I heard somebody starting. Is that...
Well, I have a question, then.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Tony. I work for the DPS also.
Okay, Tony, I would need your last name, though.
Toronto.
Okay, very good.
Okay. Sarah was saying that she wanted to do water bills monthly, because quarterly it's causing more guys to go out, and like she said, three different times going out. If we did it monthly, wouldn't it be the same thing, three guys, three times a house? But instead of every quarter, it would be every month. So wouldn't that just add to it?
Well, it may. And that's something that we're going to look at as a total, total package. We're not going to switch out to that, because there's a lot of work that would go into monthly billing. And I don't know if that's going to happen. But with, to make things more efficiently, if that's something we had to do, then we would look at, at that. But we would get your guys' input before we did anything of that nature.
Okay.
Tony, the thought process is that if somebody's having to pay, having trouble paying a water bill, and obviously, on a quarterly basis, it's much harder than it is on a monthly basis. So if they can pay that bill monthly easier on their budget, then you wouldn't have as many callouts.
Well, it just seems like it's the same houses every time we go to. So it would just be the same problem as monthly, then.
Very well, very well, maybe. We have repeat customers that, that do that.
Right.
Mayor John Kazoo, may I ask a few questions?
Sure, go ahead.
Sarah, when you first came in, you talked to, you said that you were a fleet manager at another location. And I told you, we had approximately 135 pieces of equipment. And if I recall, check me if I mistake this, that where you were at, it was approximately double what Allen Park, or excuse me, what Lincoln Park had. Is that correct?
So when I was a fleet manager, we had a population of close to 30,000 people, and we had two, just slightly over 200 pieces of equipment, and then, not including small engines.
All right. Then my next question to you was, what kind of mechanic staff did you have for that 200-plus pieces of equipment? Do you recall what you told me?
We had four mechanics, one small engine, one diesel, one delivered to police cars, and then one did our oil changes.
All right. So I didn't keep count. That was approximately eight? Would you recall?
No, we had four.
Okay, excuse me, John, do you have a point? If it is, come to it, please.
My, my point is this. When we talked earlier, and Sarah, please correct me if I mistake what you said, that you had approximately seven mechanics. And so I made the assumption, if you had double the staff, if I divided that seven for Lincoln Park, then I'd need three or four mechanics. We don't have that. We've, Lincoln Park has known that we've been missing mechanics, unable to hire them for a while. What I do have is, I do have one full-time mechanic. And his inability, because you had made this statement about doing preventative maintenance, I know, and I'm going to say, the city manager and most of the mayor and council know that we are not doing a whole lot of preventive maintenance because of lack of staffing. And that's a downfall for this community, and it's creating a lot of expenditures I don't think should be happening. We've, this, we've known about this lack of mechanic for a while. And it doesn't appear that we've done a whole lot. We have tried to get additional mechanics, but they just won't come here for the price we're paying. So with that being said, I'm done with that. It's hard to, my whole point is, it's hard to do... It's hard to, my whole point is, it's hard to do a lot of inventory, a lot of preventative maintenance, because we're running from fire to fire when something breaks down. And that does include police cars also. My second point.
John, do you have a question, question for Sarah?
Well, I had a question on the staffing, or the mechanic staffing. The other one is basically a statement, but if it's only a question that's available to myself, then no, I don't.
Okay. Is there anyone else that wishes to address council on that? Go ahead, ma'am. Sue, go ahead.
I would just like to know Sarah, how Sarah spells her last name and what company she's with, so that I can quote her accurately and identify her. So my last name is McKee, M-C-K-E-E. Thank you, and your company is G-O-V-H-R-U-S-A. G-O-V, is it Victor? Thank you. And then a H-R-U-S-A. Okay, thank you very much. You're welcome.
Okay, are there citizens that wish to be heard? Any additional citizen that wishes to be heard? Okay, then we'll go back to Council President Salsido, you had, you had questions, sir?
Yes, sir, for City Manager, please, if you don't mind.
Related to this?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, very good, go ahead.
James, Ms. McKee expressed that there was definitely safety concerns in the garage. Have those safety concerns been addressed?
I don't believe they've all been addressed yet. I will say this, we have begun to put together a new safety manual, a new safety program, working with both the Franks and John at DPS, so that is a project we are moving on. That's kind of a high priority out of all these recommendations was safety.
No doubt about it. My next question is, I think the original cost for this BOGUS report was $7500. Any additional cost in regards to lodging? Do you have a total cost for this report?
I can get it, I don't have it off the top of my head, but it hasn't hit the not too exceed amount.
Okay, in the 2004 assessment of DPS, there was talk about work orders. Do we now have work orders in place currently with the DPS?
We do utilize a work order system through an application called City Works. You actually, if you, if you go on and you look at the tree list online, that's actually generated through City Works. I do know we've been, been getting better, we're broadening the amount of activities that are being used within the work order system.
All right, that's all the questions I have, but the next time we do something like this, I'd like to get more input from the DPS. I know the DPS was invited, we did hear one worker comment and plus our supervisor also, so, you know, any little more, better dialogue in that regard. Ms. McKee took 35 minutes of her report, which gave us not a whole lot of time to discuss this very important issue on the DPS. So that's all the questions I have for now, thank you very much.
James, you had, James, at some point, this order, not order, the study came back a few months ago. Can you give an update of what has been done since the time of the initial report came in? Things that have done that you've been working with the DPS or actions that they have taken to correct some of the things that were listed in the report?
Yeah, absolutely. So, one of the things we've been starting to look at is actually going to leasing of vehicles, starting to look, we're trying to work through the same company that we're doing through the police department. So that's one of the things that we've been doing. I mentioned the safety manual and the safety program. I think we're, we're through the first five sections of it, so we're getting there. We're also, we've begun developing specific standard operating procedures. We're up to, I think we should have two, two drafts done now, we've just started working on that project. Again, I also mentioned the continued improvement of utilizing City Works, something that I had started to do, and it's still pretty sporadic, but actually doing informal coffee meetings with groups of the guys, just to kind of try and touch base, see what's going on. And then another thing we've started to work on through the DPS leadership is actually putting together weekly schedules for the different divisions. So, we're making some progress, kind of looking at these, these recommendations and moving forward with them.
Now, that, a lot of information was put across today. Obviously, you find out what you have and then what steps that you're going to take, and I'm going to suggest that we come back at this in some of the meetings in January and do a second study session over what the next steps are going to be. So if, because we can't just leave it the way, the way things, the way things are, but again, we'll have plenty of time available and have other opinions for that. So look to do that beginning of the, beginning of the year. Okay? Yes, go ahead.
I was left a bit confused because Sarah said something that said we were stalling out verbal orders, and the city manager says we're moved over to city work orders. Can we give a, give me an update on that? If at all, where are we at with that?
James?
So, yeah, at the time of the evaluation, a lot of the work orders were being done via verbal work orders. We've, we've been working diligently, we're also looking at expanding the amount of users we have within City Works. So we're starting to implement more. We've had the City Works program for a little while, but we weren't completely utilizing it. So we're starting to move in that direction, if that answers your question.
Yeah, that answers my question.
Are there verbal orders still being given out?
I would, I would believe so. I don't have any direct knowledge of that, but.
Okay. All right, I want to, we have another meeting that's starting here in about three minutes. So, since the business of the study session has come to a close, Carrie, I don't need a motion for this, do I, or do I? Do I need a motion to adjourn?
No, sir.
Okay, then the business is concluded and the meeting is adjourned. Sarah, thank you for the time doing the report and everything and for being here on the meeting tonight. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.